It's six o'clock, so we will call this meeting to order. We do have one addition that I've been requested to add to the discussion items. And that will be five E. Board member conduct. Or not any other additions to the agenda, I would accept a motion to approve.
Motion to approve what's addition.
All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay, um, next item on the agenda is a recognition of guests. See, we have a few more than we generally have here. The way we have handled this in the past, and we have a number of people here is that uh, we can allow a few minutes for uh, several people if they have something that they want to say on behalf of the group. But in the interest of time, I probably can't allow everybody to stand up and speak, but uh, if there is anyone that has something that they'd like to say, I would give five or so minutes. Mister Duffy.
I have two letters here. Um, one of them is from our high school English teacher Jennifer Walker. She can't be here tonight. She has some kids wrestling. So I would like to read both of those and just add a few comments on those and that will be it for me. Uh, this first one's from Jennifer. Members of the USD one oh seven board of education superintendent. I am writing to express my concern regarding the recent situation involving our high school agriculture teacher and FFA sponsor. While I will leave the investigation to the appropriate team, I am concerned about how this situation was publicly disclosed. When any, when any school district representative reveals sensitive information, particularly information about an unresolved person personnel issue. I fear that he or she undermines confidence in our district's established procedures. These procedures should be designed to ensure fairness, discretion, and respect for all parties involved. This is the, this has the potential to damage the reputation, not just of one educator, but of our entire district by suggesting that our district's issues are handled through the media. This reputation in turn has the potential to influence both teacher retention and teacher recruitment at our school district. As an educator myself, I worry that if I ever make a mistake, I could also potentially face public scrutiny. I understand that my actions have consequences and that accountability is essential. But I expect that my mistakes will be addressed by established procedures. Just as we teach our students the importance of integrity, our school district should model that same value through professionalism, discretion, and adherence to per to process. Our community and schools are strongest when our students, employees, teachers, administrators, and board members uphold these values by both words and actions. Respectfully yours, Jennifer Walker. Now for my letter. USD one oh seven board members and superintendent, I'm writing this letter on behalf of myself, my family, Rock Hill's teachers that are here, and all Rock Hill's Grizzly family members who take pride in and protect our school and this community. I am deeply concerned about the manner in which one of our school board members handled the most recent situation regarding our ag and shop teacher. Well, I will never condone conduct that is detrimental to student well being. What happened to the right to due process and innocence until proven guilty? What precedence is this setting for every other professional in this building who may get accused of something? Well, I find myself on the nightly news the next time a board member has a personal vendetta against me, guilty or not. If we are in the business of creating a quality education that nurtures and fosters lifelong learning in a safe environment, then we need to make sure we are protecting our educators as well. Many people move back to this area in hopes that their children will have the opportunity to grow up in a small community and school that stands up for what is right, no matter what those consequences might look like. Sadly, this is being destroyed by a select one or two who would rather carry out a personal agenda to ferry someone than do what is right. It isn't courageous and it isn't brave. It is self-serving, it's selfish, and not at all what this school or else our or our school board stands for. What is worse and extremely disheartening is that we have a large number of community members who think that these actions are normal and okay. If we want to keep quality people, people in our building, we'd better start looking at those who would rather find a win for themselves and address their wrongdoings. I can confidently speak for multiple teachers in this building tonight who are very troubled by this situation, who are now open to other options outside of this school and town. Good teachers and more importantly, great people who love this place are scared of what might happen to them. Continue down this path, not respecting your teachers and giving them the professional courtesies they deserve, and you won't have to worry about finding anyone. We won't have a school. This letter should not land any one of these people on a bull's eye or a list. A large majority of the people in this room were taught how to disagree with someone and still show them basic human decency. These great people have families and careers that mean the world to them. Please keep that in mind if your knee jerk reaction to this letter is let's go after one of them. At the end of the day, right is right and wrong is wrong. The actions that took place by that teacher were wrong, but so were the actions of one who was supposed to advocate support for our school. Two wrongs don't make a right. I hope the other board members and the staff will come together to stand up for our teachers, students, and other staff members. It is a fair ask of these teachers in this room, community members in this room, who want a thorough investigation from the board as to who amongst them leaked this information. We need board members who have integrity and believe in due process, who are promoters of unity and helping this school. Personally speaking, not picking for them, I don't want to, nor will I continue to be a part of a district that doesn't promote and practice integrity and honesty, both through words and actions. There is strength in numbers and we need to stand as a Grizzly family to defend what is right. Every one of, every single person in this room has family members, sons, daughters, sisters, brothers, who could have made mistakes in their lives professionally or otherwise. If my son or daughter were to make a mistake in their professional life in the future, I would hope those around them would have enough decency to give them the right to due process, to think of their family that would be affected by those actions. Even in the wrong, I would hope that those around them wouldn't go out of their way to make sure life for them was never the same again. It isn't about condoning the action, it's about having enough respect to provide an investigation that doesn't blast them to the world. There are another handful of teachers who probably would have attended, but felt scared to come tonight because of the repercussions that might follow. What does that say about the current state of our district? Speaking personally, I love this place and I have since I was a seventh grader when I started playing basketball with classmates here. But if there is a small group of people who are going to hold enough power to run me out of this place because of my opinion, that's a pretty damning sentence for this district. I'll be sad to leave. But I'll take my family, I'll pack up, and I'll never look back until I see a newspaper clipping in fifteen years that says this school shut down because no one wants to teach here, or the ones that do aren't worth their salt. Please keep that in mind. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that has anything that they would like to say at this point? Okay. Uh, we will move on then with business, and I do appreciate everyone's time being here tonight. We will move on to the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions on that? Well, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven zero. This time we have board member reports. Um, I'm not aware of any. Um, I do have something I would like to share though, as a board member report. So you would give me a little bit of time. I've had a number of people recently tell me that being a board member is a thankless job. And I can confirm it often is. In fact, recently, it feels like even less than that. But I choose to find the thanks in other ways. I see it in the small moments, watching our kids and our staff greet each other in the hallways, shaking the hands of seniors as they walk across the stage at graduation, hearing our students perform at concerts, or cheering them on at games, waiting in the school parking lot at night as the team bus pulls in and my kid steps off tired but happy. It's moments like these that remind me why I do what I do. Being a member of the school board is being part of a team, though we don't get to ride home on the bus together. Every member brings something unique, and it's up to us to recognize those strengths, empower each other, and figure out how each part contributes to the whole. A successful team shares a common goal and a common vision, one that's built by the team itself. I can honestly say this group is one of the best teams I've ever been a part of. Over time, I have witnessed your individual talents, your judgment, and your commitment to service. The combined effect of these strengths far exceeds the sum of their parts. For that, I want to say I appreciate you. I appreciate the talents you bring and the effort you give, day after day, month after month, year after year. This is my way of saying thank you in what's often a thankless job. Of course, being on the school board also means we won't always agree. This is not a flaw in the process, it's a fundamental, fundamental part of it. Our differing perspectives are what ensure balanced and thoughtful decision making. It's why there are seven members on this board, not just one. We've all been part of votes that didn't go the way we wanted. And sometimes we voted for something we didn't fully agree with because we knew deep down it was what was best for our students, our staff, and our schools. But let me be clear, those disagreements should end when we leave the boardroom. It's my responsibility to make sure every board member has a chance to both hear and be heard. I may not always get it right, but I do my best. And this, our board meetings, is the place to share differing views openly and respectfully, not in the general public, not on social media, and not through other outlets. Our board operates within a democratic framework. Once a decision has been made and a vote has been taken, it is our collective responsibility as board members to respect that outcome and move forward together, regardless of how we may have voted individually. This is not root think. It is respect for the process and for each other. There are also times when discussions must be held in executive session to protect the privacy of individuals. Those conversations, as well as communications from the superintendent, must remain confidential. Breaking that confidentiality is not just inappropriate, it can have dangerous damaging consequences. It undermines trust, both among employees and within our community. And I simply will not be a willing participant of a school board that threatens and harasses its own employees. These are the accepted practices of a functional ethical school board. They are not merely suggestions, they are expectations. I share these reflections tonight as a reminder of our shared duties and responsibilities. The role of a board member requires us to balance the public interest with our responsibility to support our teachers, our staff, and above all, our students. It may indeed be a thankless job at times, but is, it is also an essential one, and one that must be carried out with respect, professionalism, and integrity. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share these thoughts and for your continued dedication to the work we do together. Are there any other board members that have any reports at this time? Okay, we will move on to discussion items. Item A is negotiation team members for twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven.
Yeah, hard, it's hard to believe that we are um, at that time where we start this discussion for our um, establishing our board negotiations team, and so I guess I'll leave it uh, open for discussion on.
On.
Thanks Bobby.
My turn.
Okay.
That was quick.
Yeah.
Unless there's anybody else that wanted to find their spot, so I mean it's
Okay, um, I believe we need a motion to establish those negotiation team members.
I move. Oh, second.
All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay, item B is a board governance book.
Yeah, I, you know, this is obviously follow up from last month. Um, I'm excited, guys had to look at it. I had a couple of people reach out and find a few things that needed updated to truly match practices. Um, but I made changes to that. Um, again, it's just something that I think is important for us to have in place anytime we have. Any board member that have questions about um, policies, procedure, anything else, but also for any new board members that come on that it's kind of a, for lack of better words, playbook to help them as they step into that role, so.
Did everybody have a chance to look through it?
Yeah, that's right. Great document. Something we've worked on a long time, so I'm, I'm excited to have it in place.
And I, I guess I would say too, if, if we move forward with adopting this, and then if we need to make change, it's like, it's obviously going to be working document too, but at least it provides a good framework for us to move forward.
You want a motion to adopt it?
I'll move to adopted.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven zero.
Thank you. We'll move that up and get you guys a copy as well too.
Yeah, I appreciate you working on that.
Um, facilities, I just want to give you guys an update on some of the facility things that, that we've had in place. We talked a while back about the, the sewer line at the elementary school, and we had Hood come in and they think they found a, a better alternative, but they feel like it's going to be intrusive enough that they want to wait and try to look at doing that over the summer. Um, it's functioning well enough the way it is. We've got our custodians got their, their closet back correct. So that, that way Tandra is not having to go across the building for that, so um. I, I would say it's a short term fix, but it's a fix till summer, and so they're going to come back and explore that this summer. Jackson Glass finished up our, our, our last um, I guess, high traffic door at the elementary school, which is by the fourth and fifth grade halls up above the stairs. If you remember right, we didn't do that this summer because the stairs are getting fixed. Um, and so that's there. Um. Next tech will be here December second, I believe it's a Monday, first, first December first um, to get that key, key fob reader in that as well, and so then that will be a good go on that one, so. We've got JDK is coming back again, hopefully in the next couple of days to um, fine tune the, the heat at the junior senior high. Alan and Travis were alternating checking it throughout the weekend. Um, and each time they checked it, well, a couple of times on Sunday, it was, it was down again, so they had to fire it back up, and so we'll just continue to monitor that. Hopefully, um, these sixty degree temperatures that they're promising tomorrow come pretty quick so that um, if it isn't working properly, that will be okay until they get back here to fine tune that stuff, so. I think that's it. We, you know, we, we had them look at the sewer line at the high school out in the kitchen. Um, and that too is, they're going to wait to explore that more, but right now we feel like we're, it's functioning at this point, and so we'll wait until a better time to address that. So. Just some updates on some of the stuff going on. Questions, questions, I need that.
Appreciate the staff's work in getting our building back up after largely can see, give me some preventative measures, trying to look for those pinch points in the future if something were to happen.
Yeah, I tell you, when, you know, when we had that um, that water line break brought a lot of pride to see how many staff members that showed up to just give their time to help with mops, vacuums, everything else, and and we called Lebunian as soon as it happened. By the time they got up here, ours between our custodial staff, teachers, kitchen help, everybody's out there that the, the hallways for the most part were dry at that point in time, surface water. Um, and then they came in and did all the remediation and all that stuff, so. Fantastic job, everybody, just pitching and help out to get us back up to make sure that we can have school, or technically have volleyball that Saturday, um, and then school on Monday, so. Yeah. Any other questions on facility stuff? Okay.
Bond.
Um. I guess just moving forward with the bond, um, I put some stuff in our packet to look at. Um, I reached out to Williams and Company and just asked them to give us, you know, cost analysis of HVAC, takes your, the secure entrances piece. You know, I guess the, the first thing that when you look at that, need to understand that when you minimize the scope of the work a little bit, a lot of the overhead costs don't change a whole lot. Them coming out, the architect fees, engineering fees and all that. Well, it might be reduced a little bit, cutting a, a big chunk of the work off does necessarily mean that you're going to cut a big chunk of those expenses off. And so you should be able to play with that spreadsheet that's in there. Um. I printed off just to be easier too, but um, and then I've got kind of what that. So. HVAC alone, nothing but the HVAC with C M R fees, architectural engineering fees and all that. Um, the project was six point one six eight, so if you remember right. Um, if you're talking about a bond election, they round that to the nearest hundred thousand dollars, so that would be six point two million for that. If you add on the obviously, the addition at elementary would be an addition for the secure entrance like it was in the previous project. The junior senior high, that was going to be used as a science room to repurpose the office, and they create a new space for but without that new space, that would remain science, and so it'd have to be a new addition um, for that one as well, but. So for the HVAC, the HVAC by itself is six point two, if you add in the secure entrances, um, that that cost is seven point seven um, million. So. I looked at to someone had mentioned a lease purchase, so if we looking at a lease purchase uh, with the help of some local bankers here, just like with the bond, we're figuring about five and a half percent interest. So lease purchase, most of the time lease purchases are five to six years. Um, but I think that being a capital lease purchase, they might be able to push it to ten years. But for the six point two million on a ten year note at five and a half, our annual payment for that would be eight hundred and twenty three thousand dollars, which is nowhere close to what we have in the budget to be able to do. That would, that would equate to about roughly sixty eight, sixty nine thousand dollars a month. If you look at the seven point seven million, which would include that, it's a little bit over a million dollars a year, which would be about eighty five thousand dollars a month payment on that, so. I give you those numbers that to tell you, and it's something we can share with the public too, that in order for us to get this fixed, it's going to require a bond of some sort, and if, if it's, if it's not a lease purchase, if it's an, if it's any other type of loan, we're still looking at about that same depending on the term of the loan. That, that's the amount there.
We generated about four eighty in our capital outlay.
Correct, and about two ninety is allocated for
Yeah.
salaries and and stuff of our maintenance and custodial staff. So we have about two hundred, roughly two hundred fluid dollars. So. It's not great news, but I mean, that's, that's, that's where we're at.
Just if there was a way to stretch it out in some kind of a loan situation, I mean, I don't know what without getting out an amortization table, what, how long it would have to be to be something that we could even fathom to afford or raise the mills every year to the, to the maximum we're allowed without, but that's what I'm saying, it's continued death by a thousand cuts rather than a one time bond, so to speak, it would still take probably longer than the lifespan of what we would be installing. So pay to amortize so we can, I guess is what I'm saying.
And there's, some of the community meetings, people had mentioned US, USDA loans or grants, whatever, well, there's nobody to talk to at this point because they're on for, for those, and so I couldn't get you any information on that point on that, but um, again, those are still loans, loans require or incorporate interest as well. Um, and so um, tho- those are the numbers. Um, so then the next thing I, I guess I ask you guys to consider or think about is, remember if we're, if we're if we're going to explore bond election in March, we have to have the resolution passed next month. And that resolution has to have the scope of the work, the cost, and ballot language uh, in order to do so. If we can get to that point and we feel that it's there, the next thing I ask for you to consider is it is possible if we hire the architect firm to continue to do the drawings over the winter, again, there's a cost with that. Well aware of that, but that would allow them to, if the bond were to pass in March, there should be enough lead time to get the equipment there where they could still work in the summer. Um, to, to begin work on that.
Funding in March, then there would be time for them to still be able to get it in place such that they were talking about originally.
Correct, because the drawings would be done at that point, we would just have to pay for those. Otherwise, we're another year. And again, our, our track record this school year isn't great. Uh, we've had a leak August, September, and October um, so far, and so um, to me, that's the again, you're committing money that if the bond wouldn't pass in March for whatever you chose to put on that, then yeah, we're out that money, the architect, but at least it sets us up to be ready to get work done in in March or in May. So a lot to unpack there, but I also put in there um. If we're talking about a bond for the six point two, that based on our valuation is an eight mil increase. So again, talking about those dollar amounts that we used, it's about um, hundred thousand dollar homeless, seven sixty seven a month. Um, for the seven point seven, which included the safe, the security, um, for our staff and students, we nine sixty eight a month. Uh, commercial property and so on, it's all in there. Um. Dry cropland for the six point two is ninety seven cents an acre. Uh, the same, the security add on to that, on top of that would be a dollar twenty two an acre for crop planting, grassland, seventeen cents and twenty two, so that's all there if you look at, um, but I I, I realize it seems like I'm full throttle right now, but at the same time, if we're going to make the march, that we've we've got a lot to discuss between now and December ninth or next quarter. I guess that part I'll let you guys open up for discussion with them.
Uh, it's the, it's a secure entry piece. And I, yeah, so we with, without a another facility, we'd have to add on to the high school to do that in some capacity. I, there's two things that have kind of made, made me think we should, one is uh, I, 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 I struggle to not have some type of security piece in the next bond of whether that is all as one, or whether that is an A B process, uh, but I I, it is too important to not, at the very least, give the public the option to be able to add that kind of next level security. I, I don't know how we'd all address ourselves if something were to happen and not do everything we could to try to address that. So that's, that's, it's got to be a part of that, so I appreciate having that, what that addition looks like. The question between, for me, and between now and December is, what's the public input piece like? Um, I think, and ha, you know, is it, how could that look? I would I hate to bounce right off November fourth and go right to you know, thirty days from now and make a decision without having, obviously we've gotten a lot of input, I'd, I'd like a more formal process of input um, from the community of, of what that could look at, what that produce look like for them.
We, we've talked, yeah, I talked a little bit about that, I think he has some ideas for doing that.
To, I guess, the way I, the way I looked at it is feedback that I felt received a lot of was a lot of support for the two pieces that we have here, but not so much for the, the new tech and trade center. And I appreciate, we got to get as much input as we can from the community with this turnaround. To me, I feel like we've gotten a lot. Is it best for us to create a survey that we try to disseminate every way possible to get feedback on, hey, as a taxpayer, would you support a bond election for six point two for the HVAC replacement? Would you support seven point two for security of our buildings plus the HVAC? And I guess at that point, that, to me, that gives you the information that to, to at least move forward uh, with an action at that point, but and if the taxpayers say you know, yes to both, great if they say no to both, then um. Um. Then. We figure out a different avenue to go besides the bond. But I, I, I mean, we could put together a survey pretty quick and get it disseminated. As early as this weekend and, you know, try to gather it for Thanksgiving to. A little bit of time to process before. December and, and December ninth, I believe. Is the next meeting, that sound right? Number eight.
Is there any? Way to have a special meeting later in December and still, or is it, and still have a, a March?
I believe the date is December twelfth or fifteenth.
Fifteenth is what was just at my meeting.
So. Yes.
Yes, but one more week.
Yes.
Or have another special meeting here at the end of November.
Before the December.
After we get some survey results back.
It just depends on what this group wants to try to tackle. I mean. Obviously, we know time is of the essence, but. I, after. Last Tuesday, I don't feel like I learned a whole lot, so I don't know. I don't know what to think, honestly. I mean, I want to, I want to keep moving forward because we need to.
Here's my concern. That you're gonna send out a survey that asks if. The public would support a. Six point two, two million dollar. Project to fix just the HVAC. And you're gonna get immediate pushback because the public has been misinformed that that's only a three million dollar project. And how are we going to deal with that?
Yeah.
Little my concern would be in that same context that. The million dollars we had allocated out of capital outlay would. Would be not a wise choice for this board to make that same move with that, there's, there's too many other needs that we are not gonna be able to address. Um. By applying that.
A good part of the logic for including that million dollars in a capital outlay was to. Help cover some of the remodeling. Piece, yeah. And that's not part of it anymore.
And to show our good faith that.
That also.
We were gonna contribute. District dollars toward the project. Psychologically to help hopefully.
Wayne, you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I don't know why we've not still kicking that million dollars. If we're willing to do it on the first bond, why wouldn't you do it on the second one?
Totally different project.
Still a million dollars.
You know, we're gonna need that million dollars to do the remodeling. Ourselves. Because that's what we were putting it in there for, was the remodeling that we were gonna have them do during the project.
Yeah, if there's, if there's one thing I've learned over the last month, I did not re. I'd heard it, but. I'd ha- the, the message is loud and clear from what we are asking of our staff to put into classrooms and accommodate in spaces around our building that. We're doing the best we can, but uh, we, we need more space. And if, if you look at those. Elementary grade numbers and those enrollment, that all, all we're doing is shifting more kids gonna be in that building in the next few years. Those continue to be an issue and I. That, that'd be my reason not to, because I think we're still gonna have to do. Uh, some type of. Adaptation of our facility to accommodate more kids to the split learning needs they have. Um, our special ed folks, uh, the individual learning things we're trying to do. I, I think we've done the best we can, but. I, I, I would be very nervous to commit a million dollars of that and not try to address space in capacity, because what this, this does very little to address any of that space.
It's basically just temperature control.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I mean. We'll have, we'll be adding a secure entrance that will move admins, but I must also assume we're gonna have to do some remodeling of one's previous admin rooms and. Try, you know, hopefully we can adapt to some of that space. That's, that's the best we're gonna be able to do in this setting.
Right.
So that would be my reason not to want to put a million dollars into this at this point without. Uh. Without taking all those other considerations of space into mind.
What if we would step back and get bids? On the HVAC system? Is Wayne's actually gonna do the work or are they gonna sub it out?
They bid it out. They'll be the ones taking bids.
Why can't we take the bids?
Look, nobody's gonna give us a bid unless we can secure money to pay for it. That we would have to develop a design. That's why we went down the road with H T K. And change directions because we paid them to do a design process to see if we can cheapen up the. Of the project, H T K eventually just, we couldn't get that price down to where we wanted it. So we reversed gears and said, because they stopped and said, until you can secure some kind of way to pay for this, there's no point in you continuing to pay us to design. So that's essentially what we'd be doing. We'd be down that same path again, paying a car, you know, mechanical contracting company, architecture firm to. Design a prop building or a design HVAC system for us that we're not sure if we can pay for. That's, that's the dilemma. And so you would go down that same path and go, okay. We got a great design. We have no way to pay for it.
You don't think we can go to some major HVAC contractors and be like.
We did.
Here's what we wanna do.
We did.
We did.
That's, that was the H T K process. Like that's, that was that whole process.
No, they were the architects.
Uh, also in this, in the, in the C M A R process we chose, we also. Defer all the risk to them. By going to a design bid build process, we're at the whim of the bid we get. The process we've chosen through the last bond. Said, whatever that bid is, they will guarantee it gets built for that. We would not be able to say the same thing. We would be able to win whatever bid comes in. Based on that design.
I'm well aware of that because they figured it's much fluff that they'd cover their ass for sure. Maybe we need to assume a little risk ourselves.
At what cost?
Well, I. Re- regardless of. Regardless of how we explore fixing it, it's gonna require. Support from taxpayers. I mean. When we looked at the V R F, the commercial many splits, that was. Four point two, I believe. Plus the. Um. Pressure return to as units, everything else on top of that, so. And then. Moisture control, humidifier, something else to go up there, so I, I. I, I, I think we've explored every option. Um, and again, like you, like Fred had mentioned that. The, the A R part of that C M A R is what provides us the security that. We're not gonna go over budget. Even if inflation.
Or disrupt school.
Yeah, and if, and inflation hits, that cuts into their profits because they set that price and. Uh, when we, we would hope that inflation has dropped or, you know, slowed down, but.
Out another two thousand dollars to everybody, so we'll see if rates stay down.
I don't know what going down a path with a different contractor. If, if we hadn't already done this twice. I, I, I just don't. I don't know what we gain by trying to do another redesign. I, I think we've all landed at this. All ended in a place that this is the most cost effective. Least intrusive. Plan we can do uh for that building as it exists today. Is it, is it ideal? No, was it, was that what that building was designed for? No, but can we make it work? Yes. I don't know what. Contractor comes in and says. Uh, maybe we, we bid out for construction companies and we interview construction companies and. I don't know what that, I don't know what the alternative is. If we hadn't done our diligence to this point, I, I don't know what diligence is left.
And the problem with, with the timeline on that is when we. Broke the contract with H T K and started new. That was another two year process to get where we're at now. So if we start that over again, I would assume that it'd be another two year process to get back to this point.
Because we, we still get bids. Like the C M A R press still gives us a bid. What it does then is says, okay, if they come in lower than we, and we had this discussion, if it comes in lower and we have extra funds and it didn't cost us, we can put that back towards the bond. But that fluff is built in there to protect us. So if there's something happens, tariff, inflation, whatever it is on the. Mechanical units we need. That is protected and we are having to cover that cost. And that's why that.
Uh, seem. In there, but that's something that needs to be abundant, made abundantly clear to the general public.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So I think that's. Part of what we've been trying to do for the last month.
Yeah, this process has.
You know, we can differ on that.
So I, I don't, I mean, I'm.
It's a problem you're gonna run into after. The epic failure in the first bond is the fact that. There's a lot of people that are mad and they're gonna vote against it no matter what you throw out there.
Just. Because they just don't want. Up to school is anything like they don't want anything. If that's your interpretation.
A lot of the folks I've talked to.
And that's because.
Well, we didn't like having thirty days to make a decision on it. For most part.
Was there something we did that didn't, you know, effort we didn't make to try to explain? What was in that?
No, from what I've been told, I think it was the fact that. You introduce the bond, then you gotta make the decision within thirty days. People need a little time to warm up to it, I deal with that.
I could appreciate that. We shows that timeline, so we could ensure that we could get things moving for next summer. Uh, that's. That's the hand we were dealt. Given passing it in August and.
If we would have met with a two part bond.
It might have been received better if this whole group was rolling the same direction too. It kind of undercuts our efforts when we walk out of here and obviously one of us.
I'm not gonna support something that I don't believe in. I'm sorry, it's not gonna happen.
Alright.
I mean, I'll address the elephant in the room. Everybody's here for me, I'm sure. But you know what? Seventy five percent of the general public voted against it. You'd be surprised at the number of phone calls, texts, emails. Voicemails I received thanking me for doing what I did. I mean, I, alls I did was put. Facts out there. I didn't put a personal.
Facts out there. You put misinformation out there.
What's misinformation?
That you told everybody that this could be done for three point one million dollars. And I've got it in writing that you did it.
Yeah, and according to this info, I took it right off of here, four point five, which that has changed since then. Took off a million that we were gonna kick into it. Originally, and that gets you down.
Didn't figure in any of those extra overhead costs.
It wasn't figured into that up there.
It's because that's not the total up there. That's just the, the sum. Everything goes over the right. It all comes down to the bottom. Your sum is at the bottom. That's where your total is at. Right over there.
Eleven million.
Well, so.
But that also figures in all of the extra stuff at the bottom that you weren't figuring in. For the equipment and everything for the HVAC. Yeah, that's what it's gonna cost us for the equipment and everything. That's not figuring in any extra labor would be my guess, or any extra. If they're having to replace anything else.
When I respect the fact that the voters. Sent a clear message that. That was not the bomb they're willing to approve and pay for. And that was, that was a big ask for the taxpayer. And we all knew that coming out of here. Uh, after we voted on that resolution that this law, you brought that up several times about what this was gonna cost, and we all discussed that. We could not get to a place where none of it was less important than the other piece. That's why it was presented as, as one piece. Um, obviously, the boat, voters have spoken, because board's job is to then come back and take that input. Um. And it's, and I, and again, that, that input is. It comes in all different fashions. Uh, I would, and uh, whether. Some is more positive than others. Uh, so I, you, you say that you got these. Texting phone calls saying, great work. I heard the same input that I, I appreciate what it is. It's just really expensive. That's a, that's a, in my mind, completely different input that I got in terms of divisions there. A boy, I just don't know if I want to pay that tax bill. I respect that. I respect that a lot. Uh. But it doesn't negate that we still have to try to move this forward. And thinking that there's another cheaper way. I, I'm all ears for a cheaper way. We've, I, I, but. Think we, I feel like you're disregarding all the work you and the rest of this board has been a part of, trying to find that cheaper, cost effective way to do it. You were part of all these conversations for the last several years on these. Where was that cheaper way?
I'm well aware of this part of these conversations, but I'm also well aware that we spent several years talking about second gyms and adding elevators and. All this stuff. When Bully was here, we did.
Well, I'm starting your.
Don't, I don't remember that.
I don't ever remember.
Well, so.
Jim bid we ever received.
We, I guess we. We're gonna have to, what, what are we gonna do moving forward? Because you gave me some direction on where we need to go. Do you need to put together a? Survey for the community to. I, in, in my opinion, I really am not. Comfortable sitting for another couple of years and just hoping that we can patch. Um, to, and I realize there's a short time turnaround. I, I get that, but. If not, then we're talking. An August primary or November general election before we can go back to the ballots for a bond election. And that puts us another year behind where we're at now. So. Again, I, I know I'm the one that's gonna be the, the foot on the throttle and you guys can tell me to slow down, but. I, I, I think we need to try to gather as much information as we can to, to try to make a March election. But I don't think we have. I think the best way to get the most amount of information from as many people as possible is to send out a survey. Every possible way. I don't care if we put it in the newspaper, go to this link to fill out the survey. You know. Throw it out through Power School. Facebook page, the website, the. A chamber, push it out, all the chamber members, to all the communities, push it out. To me, that's the best way for us to get as much information as possible before we're ready to move forward. But I don't think we can until we get that information.
So you wanna end, if we get that figured, we get that sent out. Hopefully pushed, start next week. Sorry, I'm getting my foot on the throttle now. So, so are we gonna have um? Two week timeline? Have it out there for two weeks, have it out there for a week and a half. I'm just wanting to know, we're gonna have a deadline that maybe we can come back the end of this month. We can gather information and then that way, when December rolls around, we say, okay, this is the resolution we want. This is what we're gonna do. See what I'm saying?
I would like to try to get it out before the end of this week. If, if we're okay moving forward with the, with the survey. And then even if we have it. Collect it through the tw- the Friday after Christmas. Good heavens.
Good lord.
Friday after Thanksgiving, um. On the twenty eighth, because in that next Monday is the first. If we needed to have a, a meeting, we can do it that week of the first before our regular schedule on the eighth. But. Um, you know, and part of that is the, the community is gonna have to understand that. We're not gonna be able to sit down and have conversations with every community member. We're gonna have to use it. Let them understand that this is the best way to communicate what they support is through that survey because. We need those results to help. Tell us which direction we're going. So. Um. And then, so again, perfect world, we do that. We say we're gonna collect the data on the twenty eighth, which would be. Little over two weeks, we get it up on this Friday, it'd be two weeks. We had that special board meeting. And we look at that and we determine. What that data tells us on.
Right.
What the scope is. We kind of already have the cost. And, and again, this is for discussion purposes. It's not hard numbers, but it's pretty good rough numbers. And then. Determine the bond language. Whether it's one, two, five, ten, whatever it was gonna be. Um. But, because that all has to be determined for that resolution on the eighth.
Right.
So, uh, to me, that's our, our. Best um step moving forward, it might be, but.
I'm just trying.
Sounds good.
So I can work with S P, well, I can create a Google form if we need to, if we wanted to do more formal with the. Survey monkey, we can do that as well, but um. All work to get a survey put together. Do you guys want anything other than just? Basically, would you support? A bond for this amount that is. H V, the. H V A C, would you support this amount for adding security to the H V A C for this amount? How do you want the questions to read?
Essentially, yes. I mean, that. We're, yeah, prioritizing in terms of. Uh, I, I don't, again, I gathered. From community meetings that. The HVAC was recognized as a priority. Uh, part number one, so I make the assumption if it were to be an A B bond, that would be A. The question is B, and it is about securities. And I may ask this question as you develop. Because the questions will be relative to cost. In those two. Um, Wayne's proposals for secure entrances for both buildings. Does that include? The remodeling of all the old space and all those other pieces? Because uh, we've.
My assumption would be no.
Yeah.
Construction cost.
Yeah, because that, that's my concern about. Adding the. Million portion capital outlay back in is we're gonna have additional costs beyond this. We don't, great. We all know there's plenty of needs based on our facilities report that we can address that with. But.
Okay, well.
It, because, because the question becomes, is it a? Eight point six million dollar project that we're asking for a seven point six million dollar bond or is it seven point six million? It's gonna be, the bond amount's gonna be the same, but. What's the project costing any degree?
Okay, yeah, I can work on that. Um, I'll reach out to them tomorrow and help me kind of. Work on the verbiage of those questions and have a pretty good idea. Um. And then we'll. Try to get that out as soon as we can. To everybody and. Provide at least two weeks of. I guess if I get it out before noon, we. I guess if I get it out before noon, we could put a link.
Get it in the paper.
In the, in the paper too, so I'll try to get on it first thing in the morning.
Okay.
Any other thoughts? We will move on. Um, item E is board member conduct. Think I've already shared my thoughts on that, but if anyone else has anything they'd like to add to the conversation.
I did not appreciate my cell phone. Being called on my cell phone, actually, so. And not knowing. What was going on and it, I, it just, it unnerved me and it, it upset me. I just. Yeah, sorry.
I was curious, like, to look up, like. Mark, I think touched on it pretty closely and, and what he said about, uh, I don't remember the words exactly, but it's. Not a suggestion, it's a requirement or something along those lines. And I know we all take an oath to. Uphold the state or the United States Constitution and the state constitution, the school board, but like. What do we need to do as a board just to try to come together? I know we have training coming in January and a lot of us participate in that, but I, I don't know if there's, I don't know, our governance book will help. Set some guidelines and expectations and things like that, but.
It does have some guidelines in there that address recent concerns.
I was, I think it does. I just feel like our jobs got a lot harder in the last week in an already tough job and. Like I said, I just. It's. I think we've worked so hard. The last few years to try to focus on our culture. Like, we want to be a place where we want our staff to work, we want our community to, uh, you know, be proud of our school. And I just am so sad to see it try to be torn apart, uh, because it's. I don't know what, I don't know what's gained by it. I don't, I don't know what, what is gained by. Us trying to publicly display all our. All our issues across the state of Kansas. I don't know what value that brings to us district. We should. Um, we should be respectful of that to all of our employees. I, I think it's. Very dangerous precedent, very dangerous. It could have detrimental effects on our districts. And I, uh. That culture is too important. If we get that wrong.
Why are we here?
Yeah, what's, what is left? No, I know it'll sound like, you know, sour grapes to some, I'm sure, and I, I am sour, like, I'm sorry. Like, you know, we talk about where do we go from here and. When, when we didn't pull together and we had unfortunate news come out on election day. You know, I know what that election looks like. That's all I learned. I know what that, I know what those results look like, but I don't know what may, may have, may have looked like otherwise.
I guess I'm just frustrated and you, you said it. When, when we all. Yeah, we are only one of seven, each of us and every one of us, but when it comes to a collective, no matter what, we all need to be a collective. And need to respect the decisions. Of the collective, no matter what the decision is. And. Throw in. Roughly staff under the bus. It's just, I. It hurts my heart to think that anybody would want to. Do that. I just, I'm.
We have a lot to build on.
Okay, um, are there any other thoughts on that at this point? Okay, we'll move on. Um, we don't have any action items this month, so we will move on to executive sessions.
Yep, just the, the. With Mr. Myers.
Light of that email probably gives five to.
You, you said Mr. Meyer. Uh, Mr. President, I move with going to the executive session of Mr. Sells and Mr. Myers present to discuss employee, employee contracts.
Yes.
Uh, pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under common, the open may resume at the boardroom at, uh, seven oh one.
Let's do it, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor, seven zero. We're back in open session. We do have some action.
I move to approve Janice McMillan as twenty-five, twenty-six assistant track coach.
Second.
All those in favor, seven zero.
Move to approve Jennifer Urbanic as a substitute teacher.
Second.
All those in favor, seven zero.
I move to accept resignation for Abby Elkins from the drama department.
Yeah.
School play, drama. Effective immediately.
Second, is there a second?
Second, sorry.
All in favor, seven zero.
Move to accept the resignation, Janay Ryan, Ag instructor and EPA advisor, effective immediately.
All those in favor. Seven zero.
We're just gonna be dropped away.
Okay, um. Do we, do we want to discuss, uh, self evaluation this month or just have it time to look it over and approve next month?
That's up to you guys, I guess, I mean.
Does anybody feel like they need time to discuss that? You should have the information looking.
I don't, I'm good.
Um, I believe that is all the business we have to conduct.
New juror.
All those in favor, seven zero.